Let us pray. Father, we come before you this evening first and foremost to thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to assemble and to give you the praise and honor that is due unto your name. Now, Lord, as we get ready to start this meeting, Father, we acknowledge you first because you are the Alpha and the Omega. Father, we thank you for giving us life and breath. And, Father, we ask now that you look upon each one of these council members that you have graced this city with. Father, give them the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding that they need to carry on and to do what's right for the city, the citizens and the residents of West Memphis. Father, we ask that you look upon each person represented here today that will come forth and speak. Father, we ask, Lord, that you give them clarity of speech and let those who are hearing, Father, be able to hear the understanding that you would have them to hear. Then, Father, we ask now that you guide each member here in doing what is right, not only in your sight, but in the sight of the citizens of this great city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
For your standing list, place these flag and pledge.
Pledge and intitiate.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone just remain standing. We're ready.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you. And many more.
Thank you all. Definitely, I really appreciate that. Keep me in your prayers. I'm going to call this meeting to order officially. So I'm going to ask the city clerk, will you please call the row?
Mayor McLendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior.
Here.
Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Katz.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
We have eight out of 10 present, so we're going to go ahead and start our meeting. Actually, we have to do something today called a
Name clearing.
And I'm going to first ask for motion and second to add it to the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, the name clearing is for the That's not good.
That's how they move, too, y'all. There we go. Good job.
With the name clearing on here, we had two individuals that their attorney sent in the information last week, and it was a mistake that wasn't on the agenda, but we have Stacy Allen and Moses Walker. Are they here? Have you seen them?
They're here.
They? They're here. Yeah, you asked them to come in. Mayor Allen, I'm going to give you five minutes to address the council.
I'm in the process of waiting on my attorney to come first before I speak.
Okay, well, we are. It's ending, so we just call you back up during the agenda. Next, you all see the bid opening from the utility department. Mr. Bob Atkins, general manager of the utility department, building a front yard improvement project. I got a motion and second to
So moved. Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved and it's going to be sent back to them. Can I get the motion and second on the minutes?
Motion to approve this minute.
Second.
We've got much six.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We're going to go back to old business. The third reading of ordinance. City Attorney?
Actually, Mayor, we look back at the minutes and I read it the third time on the last meeting. I'll go ahead and read it again, just so everybody will know what we're doing, but it's been read three times already. This is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1305 Thompson Avenue permitting a light vehicle repair mechanic shop in a downtown mixed-use two-zone DTMU dash two.
Hearing that read for the third and final time, I get a motion and second to approve.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would like to ask that they really understand, basically, to follow the ordinance because we have a lot of properties and businesses that are not following the ordinance. So I'm asking that we really make sure that they understand what we're asking of them because if they do not follow the ordinance, they will be cited. They'll be cited.
All right.
And it's very important because we can do better. Our city deserves better, and we need to keep our city clean. It's not just about picking up paper and that type of thing. It's about everything. So you have to look at a wider approach. So that's what I've been asking for, and that's why I've been holding out.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, well, call the row, city clerk, I'm sorry.
Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
Councilor Katz.
Yes.
Councilor Crum.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Holt.
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Councilor Mohammed.
Yes.
Councilor Monday.
Yes.
Councilor Murray.
Yes.
Councilor Willis.
The ordinance is approved. Will you give that what's the number, please?
Ordinance number 2698. 2698.
The ordinance number is 2698. We have another third reading of ordinance in old business. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 301 South Wood Street permitting a heavy vehicle repair mechanic shop in a light industrial core I-1C.
Hearing that also read for the third and final time, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that one?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to just reiterate what I stated earlier. We have to follow the ordinances, and that's all we're asking. If you don't follow the ordinance, you will be cited. We have to keep our city clean. That's all we're asking. Do your part because everybody needs to do their part. If we're getting on the residence, businesses have to follow as well, and that's all we're asking for.
Thank you, Dr. Bruce. Is there any other discussion? Hearing, all the paper, aye? Opposed? It's passed. Will you give that what's the number, please?
Ordinance number 2699. 2699.
All right. As I move down to our new business, Ms. Mohammed, will you give me the pleasure?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that R-1 and O-1 be read by title only.
Are you sure you want to do O-1? I'm joking, we're joking. Back it up, second.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All R-1 and O-1 is read by title only.
Thank you. R-1 is a resolution certifying condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or residential structures constituting a nuisance within the city of West Memphis corporate limits.
All right, hearing every head. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those?
If anyone come forward about these particular residences.
I didn't see anybody that ever made a correction, brought away a correction that had already been made, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mayor, I would like to say, I'm glad, you know, to see this because this is in war II again, and we have a lot of issues in war II, and people are holding me accountable, and I'm holding other people accountable. So, I mean, it just goes for everybody. If we just work together and clean up our own properties, I think we'll look a lot better significantly.
Thank you, Dr. Bruce. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is passed. Will you give the resolution the number, please?
Resolution number 2319. 2319.
No, the resolution number is 2319. O-1, city attorney?
O-1, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution of certain documents related to the city's interest in the White Bluff Steam Electric Station, the Independence Steam Electric Station, the development of replacement electric generators, and the rights and obligations pertaining thereto, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to suspend the rules and places on the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution of certain documents related to the city's interest in the White Bluff Steam Electric Station, the Independence Steam Electric Station, the development of replacement electric generators, and the rights and obligations pertaining thereto, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I applaud the suspended rules and places on the third reading. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
This third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution of certain documents related to the city's interest in the White Bluff Steam Electric Station, the Independence Steam Electric Station, the development of replacement electric generators, and the rights and obligations pertaining thereto, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the third and final time, I get a motion and second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
If you don't mind, I would like for Mr. Atkins, of course, he met with the individual council members and explained everything so beautifully and eloquently, but for the public, if you don't mind. Mayor McLendon, is that okay?
Good evening, City Council. So this ordinance pertains to the two coal-fired generating stations that the city has ownership interest in. So we have a settlement agreement that was filed in federal court in, I think it was 2021, that those two steam stations will cease to burn coal. One will be, the White Bluff will be 2031 of 2028, and the Independence will be 2031 of 2030. So these 10, there's actually nine documents related to the decommissioning of those two plants, the closure and decommissioning of those two plants, and then there's one document, which is a binding letter of intent to build a replacement generator, which is a combined cycle natural gas plant. So that will be, it'll be a much more efficient power plant. It will be much more environmentally friendly, and so it's going to be a better fit all the way around. I think one of the most important things is that the reason that we've been able to maintain low, stable rates over the duration is the ownership in these two power plants, and so it's absolutely critical for the utility to be able to continue to provide the lowest rates in the state of Arkansas for us to replace that generation with baseload generation.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Were there any questions to him?
You know, the three lowest utility providers in the state are all three partners in this agreement.
That's correct. So the three lowest rates in the state are the city of West Memphis, the city of Jonesboro, and the city of Conway, and all three of those cities are co-owners in these two plants, and they will be co-owners in the new plant as well.
I read through the decommissioning, and it's quite extensive, but as far as the new facility goes, I know we're looking at building on the same site. Do we have room for future expansion there?
We do. So one of the exhibits, you know, off the top of your head what exhibit it is, one of them is for excess real estate at Independence. It's exhibit A, and we will, there is room there. There's capacity. Once the new power plant is built, there is capacity for additional generation there if we so desire in the future.
The conversion of the old plant to a brownfield, is there any possibility that land could be used for anything as far as maybe solar, wind, anything?
Absolutely. So we could put solar generation on that site. So the decision to decommission to a brownfield site was in order to control our costs because it's going to have an existing power plant that stays on the site, but we can continue to build additional generation there provided that the MISO interconnection is there for us.
And exactly when is this project scheduled to start?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
When is the project scheduled to start?
So our intention is to start the project as soon as these documents are signed by all interested parties so that on 1-1 of 2031, we can begin generating power at the new plant.
Could you tell us where these coal-fired plants are currently located?
Sure. The White Bluff Steam Station is located in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and the Independence Steam Station is located in Newark, Arkansas.
And where is the natural gas?
That will be located at the Independence site.
We discussed earlier supply of natural gas.
I'm sorry.
We had discussed earlier about your supply of natural gas.
Yeah, so the operator of the new plant has already confirmed that there is a supply available of natural gas at the site, so we have all the pieces in place to ensure that this plant can become operational.
Can you tell us who else is going to be involved with this?
I'm sorry?
What cities?
So in the new plant, it will be the Arkansas Electric Cooperative Corporation, the city of Jonesboro, the city of Conway, the city of West Memphis, and there's a cooperative out of Texas that's an existing owner in that plant as well.
Will there be any other coal-fired ones in Arkansas?
There are still coal-fired power plants in Arkansas, but the city of West Memphis doesn't have interest in those. So the biggest one's in Plum Point, which is up around the Osceola era. So that one, I don't know when that one's scheduled to close, but yes, there are additional coal-fired power plants in Arkansas.
By us making this change now, how does that put us in relation to supply issues, competition from other sites?
So you have to, yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, we're kind of on the front end of this, so we're making preparations now so we can have a plant online in 2030. If we wait much longer to do that, there's going to be a demand because pretty much all coal-fired plants across North America are closing. So if we wait, that's going to drive the turbine costs and the associated costs with this power plant up. So being earlier in this process is going to help us control costs there as well.
And the amount of time it takes to get a turbine now?
About five and a half years. So if you place an order now, it'll take about five and a half years before you take delivery of that turbine.
And there's no engineering costs, I understand? This is a sister to?
Because of the partners, because of the partnership that we have, they, one of the operator of the plant, the ACC, they have already built some of these plants, and so they have already gone through the engineering process, and so that's going to help us control costs there as well.
Were there any other questions? Hearing none. Would you call the row, please?
Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
Councilor Katz.
Yes.
Councilor Crum.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
She stepped out.
Councilor Holt.
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson. Councilor Mohammed.
Yes.
Councilor Monday.
Yes.
Councilor Murray.
Yes.
Councilor Wiggles.
We have seven, so it did pass. Would you give that what's the number?
Ordinance number 2700. 2700.
That number is 2700. Now, can I get a motion and second to approve section 15?
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. That emergency clause did. Permission request, we had, well, Ms. Hutchinson sent a motion, but she didn't hear it, so she came, I'll go back to it. Committee reports, fire department?
West Memphis Fire Department, we met on Tuesday for the 15 at 2:00 PM. We have no vacancies. We have two vacancies on the EMS side. We have retirements, dairy bell. Personnel equipment has arrived. It is available. No vehicle business, no maintenance building business, and we have three firefighters in standard class. Our EMS calls year-to-date, 1,255. EMS collection year-to-date is $69,396.68. Items discussed, the fire, the second annual junior firefighters program will kick off on May 30 at 9:00 AM. A water tanker is being donated through the West Memphis Fire Department Foundation. Chief Ely has saved us some money by working with utility director Bob Atkins and a local business to save us quite a bit of money to own this tanker and pending the mayor's approval. We're having a ribbon cutting for our fire academy on May 1st, and this includes high-rise firefighting. What this does for us is instead of sending our personnel elsewhere to be trained, we become a training facility. People will send their personnel to us. All our firemen, the West Memphis firemen, 29 will start working on, everyone should be able to operate all the equipment that we have, and this is expected to be completed by May 2nd. A new roof simulator was built and designed by all the battalion chiefs. We will be hosting instructor two, officer two, and inspector two before the end of the year. So I want to join Councilman Monday in applauding Chief Ely and his staff. They're doing a wonderful job, and they are raising the bar in Arkansas for the fire department. End of report. I'd like to say something about to our firefighters. I really appreciate the way y'all take care of
Yes.
our people in our city, especially me and my family. We thank y'all. We really do.
Yes.
Y'all do a great job, and we appreciate you.
I just want to say one other thing, too, and I think they hear this from me all the time. In this floodwater, they went over and beyond regardless of what anyone say. They did. They went over and beyond.
Yes. And that's end of that report. Now, we have AMP. We met yesterday afternoon at 4:00 at the Civic Center, and I don't have the official minutes, but I do need to get this out because the public need to know that there are some changes to locations, okay? So we approved the minutes as they were presented. Funding, financial reports were presented, and they were approved. We had two funding requests. One was tabled, one was approved. We have one sponsorship that was approved. Director Jackson gave us an update on the remodeling of our Civic Center. They are just about finished with the demolition phase of it and should soon start on coming back up with the construction. Now, on our Blues Off Broadway, that's every Thursday evening, and usually it's held at the Civic Center. That's been a change this year. The first Thursday night, we will be at High Tower Park, Broadway and 14th Street, the first, just the first Thursday. The second Thursday will be at the Civic Center at the parking lot. The last two, they are pending. End of report. Can I say something? Yes, sir. Yeah. The first Thursday going to be at High Tower Park. If everything works out all right at High Tower Park, it will continue to be there. If, you know, if, you know, we have a problem with parking, and we have been out soliciting places in the area to have parking. We got people that have property there. I've talked to some that we can park on. If everything work out with the parking, it'll continue to be there. That's what we discussed in the meeting. Yeah, we may even alternate between the two locations. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you all. Utility?
Mr. Atkins gave the recap for today for a special call meeting that was given today, and we'll get the tight minutes for that. Have that for the next meeting. But this is a recap of the April 10th meeting. The minutes were approved for the March 13, 2025 meeting, and it passed unanimously. The second item was employee national guard presentation that was presented by Mr. James Pulliam and the employee outreach coordinator of ESGR. The third item was the March safety report for the utility departments. There were 184 days since the last recordable accident, 191 days since the last lost time injury, and zero recorded injuries for March 2025. The fourth item on the agenda was the financial report, which expanded through 3/31/2025. The fifth item on the agenda was the staffing report. We currently, at that time, we currently had nine open positions out of 76 budgeted positions. The sixth item on the agenda was storm update, and this was presented by Communication Director The last thing on the agenda was the bid opening for the landscape project, and this was presented by General Manager Bob Atkins. He recommended Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder Incorporated, which had the low bid in the amount of $133,000, 133,000, 722.17, and this passed unanimously. That's the end of that report.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Dr. Bruce? Airport?
The airport met this morning. Garber Engineering reported that the apron rehab project is ahead of schedule, and if the weather cooperates, they will finish one week early ahead of the schedule. Phase two of the apron rehab project, it's advertising this Sunday and next Sunday, and the bid opening will be in May, and the avgas rehab project will advertise May the 1st and May the 8th, but we don't have a set date for bid openings. And that concludes the airport report.
All right. We're going to move forward to parks, and we're going to ask Director Jones, Council One Mohammed asks if you would come up and give a report on parks. Did you have one or?
You have nothing?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, basically, on Monday, they are projected to bring in Razorback concrete to start pouring the concrete on the turf, and the turf will be delivered Monday. So they said that within the next two weeks, we could very well have those five fields finished. They started the restoration on the concession stand today. They've started painting them. So those, that south end is looking real good right now. So that's pretty much the most recent update. The tennis courts, they'll start on those Monday. I've already notified the city, the powers that be, to let them know that we will not be cutting or spraying in those areas by the tennis courts. So that's another update on what's going on with Tilden. Other than that, the weather has been beautiful. We thank God for that, so they are able to work. So to them, we're good to go. And we do have our community Hall of Fame. It'll be 12:00 noon on Thursday coming up, and once again, our mayor is going to be honored along with a few other people. So you all are cordially invited to come. It's pretty much it. Any questions?
Is there an estimated completion date on Tilden?
Yeah, they're thinking by the end of May. It's pretty much just what
The South complex.
The South, yes.
North will be
Yes. Now, the thing about it, they're working on both ends at the same time.
Yeah, I just, you know, so everybody knows that that entire project won't be done by
Yeah, the entire project now. So the, when we think about the streets that need to be and the walking trail, we can't do any of that until they finish with everything because that heavy equipment, we have to come in last, and at some point, we will be notified in the city to let them know that we're going to have to shut down the north end so we can do the street and the walking trail. And we have so many citizens out there walking every single day, so we're going to have to do a good job of notifying them ahead of time to let them know that we're going to have to shut that down. But we're going to open the south end whenever we shut it down so they can walk. It won't be as nice because we're repairing the walking trail, but they can get some exercising.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
I just want to give you a thank you and appreciation for you and your team, how you've responded to some of my requisitions, doing some things at the parks.
Yes, sir.
Just that one on North 11, Row Park, I think that's going to help out over there.
Yeah.
It was small. It was small, but it's gonna help out.
Yeah. Hey, it's the small things that count. Appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you, director.
Are we good? Any other questions?
Well, we talked yesterday, but I saw our new trailer when I came in, when I come into council meeting, it's sitting over there behind the civic center now. It came in, I guess it came in yesterday.
Right.
And we got.
Yeah, it's ready. Okay. Good deal.
We're gonna move, yeah. Gonna move the personnel?
Personnel met yesterday at noon. I do not have the report to report, but it was a lengthy meeting.
Okay.
It was a lengthy meeting.
Well, does he Raymond White side here?
He just left. He's out. I think he went to his car.
He probably. Well, while we wait, I'm gonna make the announcement that Rich Road Bridge is now being completed. You see all the cranes and different things out there, so that's being taken care of. Kind of all.
That's a good deal.
Is the projected date or are they gonna finish it? They told us this morning sometime around two months with weather permitting, I think. But that's weather, it's gonna take care of the weather. He's gonna be thought of it.
He gonna get it done in two months.
It won't, it won't be too much, but I mean, it'd be so, it's probably been taken care of for some of the people that needed that.
We gonna have a tour across it after it's finished?
Yeah, we gonna dance across it. We gonna do a ribbon cut. Alright, if Raymond is not in, then they complete my committed reports. I had no appointments, so now the presentation for the mayor, now is your time. Come, come forward real quick. Ms. Simpson, come forward and we're gonna give you five minutes and let you show love to. Hold, hold. Is he out there? Okay, good, good. Come on, come on.
I just want to tell you how outstanding that our fire team was that came off Seventh Street here in West Memphis. A lot of my guys is in here. I had a house fire. I was the only one home. Didn't take them but seventy-eight five me, seventy-eight seconds to find me with the state of the art cameras and stuff that they equipped with. The team that they equipped with was awesome. They took very good care of me, not only before I got to the hospital, since I've been out of the hospital. I was at ICU Friday, y'all. Dead and these boys brought me out my house. I'm alive, walking well, smiling, talking, and I'm truly grateful. These guys, they deserve more than enough. Whatever they ask you guys for, give it to me. Cause they do. They come out and they support you guys. Whether it's floods, fires, the children, kids, the old people, they step in and they take care of us y'all just like they are family. And I'm grateful and I wanted to be here to give my boys their stripes and tell y'all I love y'all so much. And I do a lot of things, so if y'all need CC, y'all got my number, call me.
Thank you. Our fire department does a great job. We're gonna move next to citizen requests. First person we have come up is Ms. Dorothy Brewer.
I'm not gonna respond to that.
She said you come on up. I'm sorry. She's supposed to come on up.
Oh. Where?
Get your name and give you five minutes. You address the council.
Sure, I'm Dorothy Brewer, Chief Dennis Brewer's wife. I'm waiting on my attorney to come. He should be coming in just a little bit, okay?
Well, Ms. Brewer, hold on just a second. This is citizen's request, so it, it's something that a citizen requests and usually that's not what we have lawyers up here to do. So, I mean, you know, if you have a lawyer who wants to address the council, the best way to do that is go through, talking to me first and then we can see what happens after that if it's a legal issue. Now, normally citizen's requests are for citizens of the city to come up and state whatever they want to for five minutes if they don't get into issues that shouldn't be brought up during citizen's request. So if you want to wait till the end and see if you got a lawyer here, but I mean, I don't know why you need a lawyer for citizen's request.
Oh, we, we just thought I needed to just put my name on it like that. Sir.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. We'll wait till the end. Here's Timothy Robinson.
Come up and give your name and give you five minutes to address the council. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Timothy Robinson. This is Rosalyn Spikes. Her name is Nix. We really together and I really can do what I need to do in, in, in less than five. So we gave you like a, we've talked to you before, Mary, and, and we've talked to some of the others here. We wanted just an opportunity at some point to talk to whoever we need to talk to about a alternate to your supplemental benefits. We have a company that we, that we represent, which is Washington National. And our benefits, the difference between us and, without getting into too many particulars and what you have right now, we have a benefit that covers anything that you may have now, cancer, heart attack, stroke, life, supplemental, any supplemental, short-term disability. But our policies are one hundred percent return of premium. We are known as the money-back company. So simply what we do is we provide you with the same coverage that any other supplemental company, company provide, but we give back all the money it does as a savings account if that policy is never used. So I was just trying to figure out a way to come and maybe present this to you all so we can get an audience with whoever we need to talk to, to show them that we, you know, there is a better way. We've been in business since nineteen eighteen. We have given back over five billion dollars in return of premium to date. We service a whole lot of cities in the, in the state of Arkansas and Tennessee as well. And so whenever, whoever we need to get, go to from here, we just want to kind of present it real quick. We put a brochure in front of you. You can kind of see what we're about. It's a card in there and whoever we need to go talk to after that, we're, we're willing to talk to them just to have a chance, chance to offer and show you what we can do for this city, like we do for the city of Memphis.
Definitely, and Ms. Spikes, we get you in contact with our HR director, Ms. Yvonne Carr, who handles all of our benefits and insurances and different things like that. If you can call back, well, we, we close tomorrow, but next week I can sell a good appointment set up for you all just to talk with her and just offer what you all do.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Alright. Ms. Angela Thompson, Thomas, we give you your name in five minutes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Angela Thomas. My address is three oh four North Bond. I am coming before you not only as a concerned citizen, but also as a taxpayer who has had many conversations with members of this council. No disrespect to anybody, but I have a few points that I want to make and I have passed out some stuff that I want to talk about. I will take all of my five minutes and if you have any questions, you're welcome to talk to me afterwards. First, I would like to say thank you to the people that rescued me and my daughter. Water was up to my chest. I was scared to come out my house. A rescuer carried my dog and helped me and my daughter across the lawn because we were forgotten on my block and we are one of the worst areas in West Memphis. I was asleep and my seventeen-year-old daughter, who was highly functioning autistic, who was out there in the lobby with headphones on because she don't do sound, woke me up and said she wanted to check the mail and could not get out because we're drowning in water. I immediately went to my door and said, what is going on? I started making calls. I couldn't get through. My phone was acting weird. I ended up calling my friend's brother, my friend's brother, who's a police officer who gave us a direct number. Long story short, it's not nobody's fault. We cannot control mother nature. I had a whole conversation with the mayor the day before on the corner about the citizens throwing trash in our newly fixed streets that we got fixed over there. So I'm not blaming anybody, but it is a problem here. Two years ago, members of this council and me had it out toe-to-toe because I said things were not getting done. So today, I'm coming before you. I made this offer before to the city of West Memphis and I offered to help y'all write grants. I offered to help you like I do the nonprofits in this community, to help us get funding because I've been buying food for people. I've helped people, put people up since this flood has happened. I only heard from three council people. I did go above people head around here because I wasn't getting a response and no offense to the mayor, but some of your departments make you look real bad. They hang up on people. Some of these secretaries and receptionists that answer phones, and I'm not gonna say what departments, but I will have that conversation with you. They make us look bad. We have a whole team, a department, that should be helping us mitigate these issues. There are four things you need to do in a state of a crisis. You need to mitigate, prepare, do response and recover. I'm not gonna go over the whole sheet. I gave it to y'all to look at. I also gave y'all a list of grants that are still available as of today that y'all can apply for to help these people. I have insurance, but guess what? My insurance is now maxed out and there are things they are not covering because they said the infrastructure failed. I live between a plumbing issue, a plumbing train and an easement. I invited Ms. Mohammed Wayne Crum. I've talked to Tracy Cat. I woke people up on Sundays, so I'm the one that woke up people and called and asked for help because we were not getting the help that we needed. I'm not just talking about Bond Street because I could pack up and move tomorrow, but I'm vested in West Memphis and I'm not going anywhere. A jest man builds seven times and I plan to be that jest man. But for the people who can't build seven times, that are throwing all their stuff away, that we tried to get dumpsters for, we tried to get trash picked up, people have been personally texting you, some of these council won't even answer the people calls. These people are broken and they're hurt and it's upsetting to me because I have an auntie that lives on South Twelve Street that the police have been begging to get out her house and she won't leave because she don't trust people from this administration. Not you individually, but people in general because she's had, you know who I'm talking about. You know my auntie. She live behind your house. She is still sitting in there with wet carpet, mildew and mo because she don't trust people. We have got to do better. I don't care if people don't like me personally. We don't gotta be friends, but this is about business and this is about the city and the citizens of this community. We should have an emergency fund set up for these people. I shouldn't be buying people cleaning supplies or helping put them up in hotels. That's not my job, but as a citizen, I care enough about these people. I break bread with them. I walk with them and guess what? I was the first one to have my house, Ms. Mohammed could tell you, I was the first one to have my house packed up because people came to my rescue. They cashed out me, they gave me stuff, but everybody don't have that. So me in turn pouring out to my community, want to help them. So my question to y'all, here we are, two years and two months later from the last flood, what are we gonna do? What is going to be different this time? Because I feel really bad for all my seniors that don't, that I've had to bring tissue and paper towels and disinfectant to in the last two, Saturday will be two weeks. And I don't see people knocking on everybody's door. I don't see people trying to uplift the, what is OEM and a community person for because I watched her pick and choose who hotels she paid for and mine's wasn't one of them. And thank you to Shauna. Thank God for her and true, she was a lifesaver to us. So my question to y'all, I'm giving y'all the information, what are we gonna do now?
Thank you, Ms. Angela. Alright, next is Ms. Joyce Gray.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joyce Gray Tillis. I live at three oh seven South OK Street. I'm calling about the flood in OK Street and South Twelve Street. I own a home at six twenty South Twelve Street. This is the third time my house has failed. I have a drainage in my yard. I have kept, called Mr. Odell Slaughter about three or four times to feel that drainage, clean that drainage out so the water can flow, had nowhere to flow. When Keith Ingram was in office, he came to OK Street, had a ditch dug, cross a trench so that water can run off so our people wouldn't have to wade in the water. My house don't flood on OK Street, but the people houses out before means flood. And when they can't get in their house, they like to drive through my yard. And I'm, I was told you all had eight pumps, only three pumps was working and you was in my neighborhood the day driving, you know the water was high too. And also in that ditch on Thirty-first Street, they never cleaned their ditch out. That rain bagged up in their ditch and those people houses got messed up. I have flood insurance on all my property, so I won't have to worry about the city taking care of it. But the other people that don't have flood insurance and they round here throwing all their stuff outside on the street, what can we do to stop the flooding on OK Street and Twelve Street?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I did see you when I was coming through and I was actually going to Ms. Coleman's house that lives on, on the, on the end. And I want to correct, it's all, all of our pumps was working, including another one that Bob had installed, so all the pump was working. And I think you just justified when I was out there pushing for that tax to make sure that we get the thing channel retention pond in Eastwood so that water drains from you all street or drain in the back of that empty land that's there. Clear by Bios as well to clear and fix ditch seventeen to get out of water up city. So I thank you for opening, make, finally making that point on that tax that falls so hard that many folks were against, but thank you.
Well, I was against the tax. I'm still against the taxpayer, but that don't justify it. You got the money, they had the money before. That ditch and that trench that Keith Ingram put down there, it should have been kept clean.
I, I understand, but I, you know, I, and I agree with you, but I can't keep going back with Keith Ingram or.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying, but we don't, we don't have, mother nature don't let us know when they coming to hit us like we do. And some of our people in my area, you know, Twelve Street are old, people in my water are older people.
I, I agree.
They don't have flood insurance.
I agree.
And so we trying, we, these people can't start all over.
I agree, I agree. I, I, I want that, and like I said, I'm just saying that's why I pushed so hard for to get this tax so we can start cleaning out them ditches, making sure that they clean because you know, trees don't grow up in three, four, five years. They big trees in our areas as well as a new retention pond. So I agree with you one thousand percent. That's what we working on. So we get that in, we'll start working on that and Bob will continue to make sure our pumps working. Our fire department wade in the water, swim, row boats, police, the whole nine yards. So I agree and like I said, it, we had flood all over our city. It wasn't just in war three, definitely, but I seen you and your, your area flooded, flooded over here in war two, so it flowed everywhere. And like I said, it was a generational storm, so this one just a storm that we see every day, but we working and soon we get this money and you will start seeing some of the results of the thing the this administration is doing.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
Did Ms. Mathi, Annie Mathews make it?
No, I spoke on her behalf.
Okay, thank you. Alright, before we adjourn, we're gonna go back and I seen the gentleman come in. We had a name clearing for Mr. Stacy Allen and Mr. Moes Walker.
I'm an attorney for Stacy Allen and Moes Walker and we're here for a name clearing because basically, both of them got suspended and supposedly within less than twenty-four hours of their suspension, an anonymous tip was delivered to the news. Who, who knows who it could be? Who knows? But in any event, an anonymous tip was delivered to the news that says that they're suspended in connection with allegations of sexual harassment. And then what happens is the city releases a statement. Now normally they don't talk about pending investigations, but in this case, they decided to release a statement. The mayor decided to have interviews with the TV and the result was, the result was that if you look and just Google Moes Walker and West Memphis, Google Stacy Allen and West Memphis, the first four pages come up with that they are suspended because of an investigation of sexual harassment. It's something that isn't true. It's something that isn't proved. It's something that is nothing more than retaliation because these men stood up and said that what the chief is doing isn't right. And I note, I note that the chief was. And I note, I note that the chief was here, he was here, but he's not now. When it's time to face his accusers, he's not here. But I'll tell you something, justice is coming, justice is coming. These men were suspended, the mayor's deposition was on Monday, Robin Campbell's deposition was on Friday, and they're suspended right between the two, how about that? And because of that, when we went to depose Chief Campbell, because there was a pending investigation, and you can't talk about certain things, there were questions that we could not ask Chief Campbell. But don't worry, chief, even though you're not here, don't worry, justice is coming, and you will eventually, very soon, have to answer those questions. We're coming back to him. Now I'll tell you something, we can't talk about what the investigation is about, and they know that. When this was released, and my clients are accused of sexual harassment and being suspended, and this serious matter of sexual harassment, they know that the policies don't let them speak out to defend themselves. Under policy, they can't, they can't talk about what that investigation is about, so you smear them, you smear them, but then you don't let them talk. Now my client, Mr. Walker, you know, he's ready to move on. He's not happy with the way the department is being run, he's been trying to get other jobs, he basically had another job. It's gone now, it's gone, because first four pages of a Google search comes up with this mess. And I'll tell you something, we can't talk about what the investigation is about, they've gagged us on that. But you know what we can talk about? We can talk about what the investigation is not about. My client, they've now been interviewed, they know what the charges are against him. And with respect to Moes Walker, one of the charges against him is not sexual harassment. We can talk about what these investigations are not about, and Moes Walker is not even charged with sexual harassment, but that's not what they've put out to the media. Chief Campbell is here, I dare him to just come out, come out and say, Moes Walker's being investigated for sexual harassment. But he can't, because Moes Walker is not being investigated for sexual harassment, and they know it. They knew it when they released that statement to the media, they knew it when interviews were given to TV. This is shameful, because what's really going on here is, ladies and gentlemen, this is the second suspension for him in a year. The second suspension, the first time he was suspended, he literally spent five or six months off being investigated on the city dime. Now is that, has West Memphis got so much money, or its taxpayers so free with their money, that they're prepared to pay this man a captain's salary to sit there doing nothing, when he could be investigating murders and homicides, he was the CID chief? Is that not important? Was that a good expenditure of money? Now you've got half the command staff out again, over a month, the city paying them. And why is that? Retaliation, ego, fear of being held responsible, that's why. This is a shameful waste of taxpayer money, but justice is coming and questions will be answered. And I see you're smiling, Mayor, but this isn't funny.
It ain't about me smiling, it's about me laughing at you, I show both of you each in love.
Okay, well, you keep laughing when we see a jury, sir, but in any event, maybe you won't laugh then, but in any event, but in, in any event, that's what this is really about. During his first suspension, Moes Walker was threatened with criminal prosecution, no joke, criminal prosecution. Decertification as a law enforcement officer, they threatened his career. Demotion, they threatened everything he worked for, termination. But Moes Walker's no coward, he's here to stand up, he's here for his piece to be said, unlike Chief Campbell, who, who now, when he has to face his accuser, is absent, vacant. Moes Walker didn't let those threats intimidate him, and he's not gonna do it now, neither is Stacy Allen. Stacy Allen's been in a lawsuit with him. And they, this is just get Stacy Allen, get Moes Walker, because both of them have stood up. I mean, ask yourselves, ask yourselves, Michael Grant has his ribs kicked in by several officers. Who's working and who's not working? The officers that kicked his ribs in, they working.
Mr. Gillum, is this, is this a name clearing hearing?
Yes, sir, it is.
Are you going over?
It's, because this is retaliation.
Well, you're going over other litigation, so if you want to talk about that, well, I'd ask you not to.
Well, I'm gonna talk about what I want to, you can't, you don't have the right to restrict the content of my speech.
This is a name clearing hearing.
This is a name clearing hearing, and what's really going on, sir, is retaliation.
Uh, you got a microphone there, you don't need to yell.
Well, sir, I'm exercised about this, this is upsetting, this is wrong, it's a waste of money. Now I'll tell you something, I mean, that's the thing, is y'all on the city council, you know, that, that's always the defense, is the chief of the city, the chief ain't the policymaker, the mayor ain't the policymaker, the city's the policymaker. So is this okay? Is this retaliation okay? Is beating Cheesy Pulliam okay? You got a man who kicked Cheesy Pulliam in the head, he's working right now, but not my clients. Is that okay? Is Michael Grant kicked his ribs in, so those men are working, but the men who, who opposed it and who reported aren't working? Is that okay? Is retaliation okay? You're the city council, you got the power to do something about it, you could issue a statement today if you wanted, saying that we don't think these allegations against them are right or fair, or that that should have been released. You could do it, probably won't. So in any event, justice is coming, questions will be answered. And if anybody wants to stand up and say whether or not Moes Walker is being investigated for sexual harassment, they can. They can, because it won't violate policy, because he's not being investigated for that, that was just false. Now, one thing we're gonna see is what the allegations are against my clients, we can't discuss, but we'll prove that's false, and we'll prove that's retaliation too. This has just been a smear, and it's a shame, it's a waste of money. And it's a shame that Chief Campbell don't have the, the guts to be here and at least face his accusers. Thank you.
I think that was a great job. I have nothing else to bring for you all, can I get a motion and a second? See adjourned? Second, Hall of Fame by eye?
I'm sorry, I thought Ms. Brewer was on the agenda.
Ms. Brewer. Ms. Brewer's been up twice, oh, is this your lawyer? Okay, come on up and, and uh, hold on, the man, now we, you, there was a name clearing for these two gentlemen, and I know these guys, so they're good guys, but uh, we don't know what this thing gives them.
This is a citizens' request.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Ms. Brewer. Now as y'all know, and this is, this is a, a, uh, this is more a plea for compassion and paying what's owed. As you know, Ms. Brewer's husband uh was, was a firefighter, and he was at, at times the chief of the fire department here. Now, Mr. Brewer, Chief Brewer uh worked as a firefighter for many, many years, uh and over the course of those years, he got exposed to various chemicals, as sometimes happens to firefighters. And ultimately, uh in the Workers' Comp Commission, Mr. Brewer's, um, uh, Mr. Brewer's uh death and his cancer that he got was determined to be, uh, it was determined to be uh, uh, something that came in the line of duty. And there were benefits that were available to him. Now Ms. Brewer went, uh, some of those she got, some of those she got, but there were other benefits that were available to her as his widow. And he would have wanted her supported, uh, he wanted her to have what she was entitled to. There were benefits that she was entitled to get, and she went through the HR person, the HR manager at the time, she's no longer with the city. Uh, I'm not gonna say her name, uh, and unfortunately, that lady did not do what she needed to do. And as a result, my client, uh, Mr. Brewer, Chief Brewer's widow, did not get the benefits what she's entitled to. And I would just ask that the city look into that and see if there's anything that can be done for this lady, because her husband gave good service to the city, honorable service to the city, he, he reached high and earned his title, earned his position, earned our respect, and ultimately, he, he paid the price for it. Uh, he died sooner than he should have, and so if, if we can look into uh what the issues are with her and see if there's any way for her to get the benefits that she should have gotten, had the HR manager not kind of missed, missed the boat, uh, I'd ask that the city do that, thank you.
Hall of Fame by eye?
Opposed?
Thank you, sir.